Next year, as far as this year, we knew our fall, our winter, spring was almost finalized. And then summer, we used the number that as of this morning, Fabio sent me an updated number. We're already exceeded that number. So our summer enrollment is already over 2% over budget. Again, I think we are very conservative in our enrollment for 1920. Going forward into 2021, on a budget to budget basis, our credit enrollment is going down 19.8%. And why I say credit enrollment, credit enrollment pays tuition and fees. So when we're doing the calculation for tuition fees, that's the number we use. Non-credit does not pay tuition, but they do factor into state aid. So budget to budget, 19.8% credit enrollment. Actual this year to budget, we are looking at an overall credit decrease of 14%, 15% for the fall and spring. The difference between the 15 and the 14 is we're not projecting a decline in summer nor winter. So the net effect of those other two semesters provides for a year to date against next year, declining credit enrollment of 14%. As far as fund balance, I did not make significant changes. I re-looked at the numbers. There's a lot of estimates, basically where we're going to finish 1920. I really didn't have enough information to make sizable changes to that number for 1920. As I mentioned, there are three major areas that will and should impact the fund balance in a positive direction, and that's the CARES funding, the institutional portion, the fourth quarter payment of the state aid. And why I say that, we are, all the 30 institutions are getting guidance from their auditors, how we should recognize that 20%, we should book it as a receivable, we book it as a receivable. That means it's revenue to us. So we're getting guidance from system administration, system controllers office, as well as our own independent auditing firms, how we should, from an accounting standpoint, account for that. And then potential enrollment. CARES, the COVID impacting it in a negative fashion, but certainly from a unemployment effect, we should see some enrollment increases due to the unemployment rates, which is unfortunately. The other thing about enrollment, we, I mentioned, we were projecting fall to fall 15%. As of this morning, we are down 11.8%, so we are already better than that 15%. Again, when Fabio and Steve run these reports, these are point in time. So last year, number of days before the start of the fall semester, this year, same number of days before the start of the fall semester. So we're already ahead of that 15%. Again, I think I'm good with the projections of that decrease, and I think, I think we'll do it. Doug has a great academic plan, and I'm very, I'm very optimistic that we'll hit that. As far as personnel services, one of the big mismatches in the budget that the board adopted, you have a detail of $60 million of personnel expenses. And then when you look at the summary, there's a significant difference. What I attempted to do, if you look at the detail, the PDF pages 30 to 39 has that detail still in there. But that total on that page, 58, 58,151,000 now ties out to the summary on the appropriation summary. I've accounted for every increase and decrease. We're looking at some additional funds at a fund balance to extend for more retirement incentives, faculty federation that will provide about $1.2 million salary savings next year. And the number, sort of the number that we have to hit is 2.2 million 460,000 vacancy savings. And that, that's our goal for going into the 2021 year to hit that number, but exceed it. So we are looking at ways to appropriately redeploy and reallocate our staff. So Tracy and her team are on it right now. They're, they're looking at how we can better utilize those employees of the institution to impact student success, student services, and enrollment function. So Tracy and her team know, know the challenges that are before us, and she's already working very, very diligently on it. So I'm pretty comfortable. The payroll office ran me a report just yesterday. As of yesterday afternoon, we have $819,473 in vacancies that are in the budget right now. And my first day on the job, we implemented a hiring freeze. We implemented a freeze on any discretionary expenses. We are trying to, as best as we can, to eliminate and will greatly reduce any overtime and comp time. So we're putting in spending constraints immediately that will not only impact this year, but also next year. The fringe benefits is strictly a function of our personnel. It's at 45%, 45.75%, very high fringe number. But adjunct faculty and all the part-time employees we use, other than FICA, there's no benefits connected. So on a total basis, our fringe rate is much higher. Contractual services, this was a big reduction. I looked at what we had projected for 1920 year end, and I reduced that by 20%. And that's consistent to offset that 20% reduction in state aid. Immediately task the senior executive staff to go back to all their departments and put forward a budget that hits that 20% mark. So we will be eliminating or greatly reducing any discretionary expense. It's going to be difficult, but on September 1st, I want every department to have their full year budget allocation in front of them, so they can conduct the business that they need to at the college. The other change on the expense side, we reduced equipment spend by $360,000. And why that is important is the county subsidy is received in two forms. We get the largest chunk of our subsidy on April 15th. But then to get the remaining $1,080,000, you actually have to submit equipment invoices to the county by year end. They have to review it, and then they submit the remainder of our subsidy in the form of equipment reimbursements. The county executive and the budget office concur that we can start reducing that amount. So in two years, the full subsidy, the full $18.8 million will be received on it before April 15th, and we no longer have to account for equipment. And then you will note, there's two capital projects included. I had a discussion with the county executive on Tuesday evening, and he expressed some concern that the college was putting forward a capital project, asking the county for $13.5 million per year for six years totaling $81 million. And he felt that was not a realistic number, or something that could be sustained. So between the correspondence with myself and the budget director, we revised that, asked down to $4 million per year with a $4 million match from the state of New York. So it's still an $8 million capital project, but I think it's much more sustainable, certainly for the county's perspective, as well as the college perspective. So that is a quick overview. I am certainly open to any questions. At the end of the meeting, you'll be asked to approve three separate resolutions. One, no change, that's the tuition and fee schedule, but I'm trying, I put together, we get, Gail put together, a whole budget book that basically replicates June 25th with the updates. So that's the three resolutions that the board will be asked to approve. So it's the tuition and fee schedule, the maintenance of support, and the total appropriation. So the total appropriation and the maintenance of support have to be modified based upon this budget. With that, I, the only other item, this will go, hoping that the board approves it. It will go immediately to the county executive, county budget director, and county legislature. We are on the schedule to go to community enrichment next Thursday at 11:00 a.m., followed by a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. next Thursday night to discuss the SUNY Erie 2021 proposed amended budget. So with that, I will open it up to any questions trustees may have. And I apologize for getting this so late. I, I am, I tried to work, you know, that 20% check just came in. So it changed some thinking all along. So I apologize for getting it so late yesterday, but I wanted to give you the opportunity, you got a chance to take a look at it ahead of this meeting.
Right, Len, do you want me to comment now based on my review of it?
You're muted, Bessel, on hand. Muted.
I'm unmuted. All right. Jeff, I guess as the budget chair, I'd give you an opportunity to ask a few questions. Then we have to move approval of the three resolutions. So if we can do that somewhat expeditiously, but the floor is yours. To clarify and to perhaps give us an overview on your thoughts on the budget.
Phil, your awareness, you know, you're a citizen of SUNY Erie for many years and part of the community. And I'm glad that you were drawn that experience, including your political experience with county and around so forth. To come up on a really quick basis, hopefully is more workable to the entire college community. And by extension, I would like to thank Doug, Fabio, everyone you mentioned, who, you know, obviously one person came in and immediately turned the thing into something we can address on July. So it was a great team effort, and thank you so many people on this call who are behind what we're looking at. Again, many things that I had in my mind, you touched on, you clarified a little bit. I just want to go quickly through, I would say, Phil, the state aid piece, 2947 per FTE. We were, we were operating under a thought along the lines that because FTE is, because we are going to more students, that FTE is impacted by that, and therefore, potential cut from the 2047 could be anticipated. Are you, are you comfortable with what you've done on the state aid piece here? And clarify a little bit how time relates to the FTE, and why we maybe don't have to be as concerned about the part-time as we thought we did.
So the, the big change, Jeff, I was able to review Penny's, sort of the background of what drove the numbers and the numbers as far as full-time headcount, as well as part-time credit hours. And the distinction there is full-time headcount, doesn't matter how many credits they take. Once a full-time student hits 12 credits in an hour in a semester, they could take 15, 18, 21. They do not pay any additional tuition. They're a full-time student. A part-time student, we could have 30 part-time students, and each taking one credit hour. That only equals one FTE. So the budget projection from Fabio, Steve, and Doug looked at the estimated full-time headcount times the full-time reimbursement rate. And then for the part-time, I looked at the part-time credit hours and multiplied by our part-time credit rate. So that's what drove the tuition revenue. And again, the, those numbers tie back to the enrollment forecast. So they are consistent as far as the basis of the calculations. It was just really, you know, doing the calculation, multiplying full-time headcount times the full-time tuition rate and adding the part-time credit hours. No provision, as I stated, for non-credit. They do not pay tuition, but they do drive state aid. They're part of our FTEs for state aid purposes.
All right.
Just one, one other question. So that's on a revenue standpoint. We are seeing a significant increase in part-time students. That does put burdens on our expense side. That puts burden on student services. But from a revenue perspective, Jeff, it's, you know, it's actually from a financial standpoint, I'd rather have all part-time students because they pay more pro rata on 30 credits versus one full-time student. But on an expense side, the services are much more cost-intensive.
Fair enough. Thank you. I thought you were appropriately conservative with putting the 20% in the fund balance, at least yet. You, hopefully we'll get that. The increase of 250 from the county, let's remember to thank them for that. I don't recall that being in the mix until at least very recently.
That actually was in the 1819 budget. That was the actual amount received. I'm not sure why it was less in the, or that was the amount for 1920. I'm not sure why a lesser amount got put in the 2021 budget. But when the county budget office sent us questions, I think they sent it before I even got here, they were asking, why did you reduce the 250,000? So it's just a maintenance of support from prior years, Jeff.
That's good. I think we thought of it as a one-up situational thing, but it sounds like it may be more repetitive. And we appreciate that support.
And we confirm that with the county budget office.
Great. Your enrollment decrease, the 19.8 and the 14 that you explained, it seems to me conservative. Hard to predict that. We, it's very difficult, and we're going to have to continue monitoring that. As for the differential mean on the recovery page and the fund balance page in terms of the figure for the fund balance use in 1920, my only suspicion is that assumption that we are refinancing the workday product at a legal stall at the moment, but account for that differential for that offline. I thought the choice of using 900,000 additional from the fund balance, now that we know that it's a bit more robust than we did on June 25th, stimulates some retirement savings of 1.29 million was an appropriate choice. But I just brought my fellow trustees' attention to that use of 900,000. I think we're all comfortable with that in these very difficult. I do note that we didn't build in anything in terms of renegotiated contracts, and that's coming up. I think, I think the assumption there is that it's not going to be easy, frankly, in these times to reach agreement. I think all of us in the college community, everyone on this call, need to approach that in real good faith, try to do as best we can. But it's hard to predict that at this point, and we will just simply have to have that be one of the fact that influences, like continuing enrollment, the federal aid impact influences how this budget moves. But I think at this point, it's appropriate to, or to put that to the stock of the budget, which you have done. The contractual services was a big number. You touched on that, 3 million 96. I think, you know, that's one that the entire college community is affected by. I just want to make sure you have a sufficient basis for that number, the achievability of that number, because it's pretty big approaching 400. So how, how was that achieved? Are we talking about adjunct there? What, what's going?
No, contractual is not adjunct. Adjunct is accounted for. Look at that personnel summary, I believe it's shown on page 39, what is projected for adjunct and overload. This is the non-fixed costs that we have to bring down and bring under control. It's going to be significant, but you know, I'm going to try to limit the comparisons to that value. When we build our budget, we ask departments for a scenario all the way from 0% cut to 50% cut. And every department in total was able to bring it to 20%. So there's going to be sacrifices, Jeff. There's, there's no doubt about it. But that's going to be the target, and the leadership with their, their direct reports will craft something that hits that 80%, and we want to roll that out then on day one of the budget. They have their full year budget, so they know what their spend is. We have to limit discretionary. We already started that, as I said, July 1st. We put that out, pretty, pretty strong, you know, communication. We have to stop our spending.
Do you think that by doing it front-of-the-year basis, Phil, instead of on a semester, semester basis, do we sacrifice flexibility and ability to make mid-year improvement?
I, I don't. You know, some, some contracts are year-long. You know, I know many of the, like the workday contracts are full year, but we have the ability to control things, whether it's contractual services, Jeff, or we look at personnel. We have the ability to control those costs. So we will be looking at the budget each and every month, monitoring it. It's not, we're not waiting to September 1st to start monitoring. We'll start monitoring it right now. We implemented a hiring freeze. So it's not just contractual, it's a, it's a, you know, $89 million budget that we have the ability to impact and control. Is it perfect, Jeff? I have not had the ability to go back to every department and say, give me a 20% cut. But that will be something the leadership team works on immediately.
Bill, on the $8 billion piece that with the county dropped to $4 million in open time per year, and the state match of $4 million making up the, do you have any basis for the state match? Or is that simply for a desire or something left to seek? Is there any program that could reduce that $4 million, or is it just if come?
So I will answer, without answering first, similar to the release of the 80% division of budget, just notified the system administration that they can start releasing monies for capital projects. All capital projects for community colleges were on hold, so we can start moving forward with the capital projects that have been previously funded. The way the state capital budget process starts, we at the local level, you, the board of trustees, needs to pass a resolution sometime in the fall identifying a capital project. Then it goes to the Erie County Executive and Legislature for their approval. Once we have the local approval, we submit it to the state of New York for inclusion in the governor's budget proposal. And then the governor's budget proposal, the Assembly and Senate never change capital. At the end of the day, come March 31st, under normal times, the capital project created in the fall is funded at 50% in the state budget. So that's the traditional capital process. So do I have, that state has approved it? No. We will go forward at some point this fall. SUNY asks us for all capital projects. We got to do a project action for them. We sent it to SUNY, so we have to identify the capital project that's being asked for. So it's part of a process, but under traditional times, all capital projects are funded, one half by the sponsor and one half by the state of New York.
Hey, Jeff, can I just interrupt for a second? So just to keep track of the schedule, we've got about a half hour to complete our work on this budget, and we have to go into executive session. So what I would like to do, Jeff, is budget chairman, if you don't mind. Keep in mind, next week, we're going to have a lengthy session over at the legislature to go over to fine-tune this budget, and so there'll be more opportunity for public discussion about it. Let me just say, before we take up these resolutions, I think these amendments, these corrections have strengthened this budget at every level, particularly as we make plans to go over to the legislature next Thursday, and, and also for the community's understanding of the condition of the, of the college. Although we are in a perilous, you know, period of time, this budget strengthens our position almost everywhere. And including, I might say, our vital personnel force. So if, if we could, I would like to take up these three resolutions. Unless anybody's got anything else they want to add, we can continue with discussion with as much time as we have. But I'd like to get the business end of this done, so we can meet the schedule and, and keep our trustees here that need to vote on this budget. So.
That sounds good. I just will summarize by saying, the elevator speech here in terms of what are, what are we actually doing this morning, is moving the budget from 84 million to 95 million round numbers. That, that's coming about through 2.1 million of revenue and expense adjustments as reviewed by Bill Rutter. And the 900, the other 900 is the extra expenditure from the reserve to stimulate or the savings. So I will stop there. That's what we're, what we're looking at.
Right. So it looks like we, we got a budget that revenue matches appropriations. Is that, was that correct, Bill?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's, that's a huge accomplishment. So Mr. Chairman, Jeff Stone, you've got three resolutions pertaining to the budget. I, I think we have to take them up separately, and would you like to move those? He's muted.
Okay. Muted. The order seems to be the maintenance of effort comes first. That's on page, and the SUNY operating budget on page six, and then the supporting tuition and fees on page seven. So we have those materials in front of us and on our screens. I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number one, the maintenance of effort resolution, as set forth in our material, page three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Hobler. So a motion made by trustee Stone, second by trustee Hobler on the maintenance of effort resolution number one. Would Denise please call the roll?
Yep. Todd Hobler.
Approve.
Lynn Lenahan. Carrie Phillips says, did she ever make it on?
Yeah, I'm on my phone. I approve.
Thank you, Carrie.
Jeff Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz, approve. Amy's approve. Albert too.
Approve.
All right, Mr. Chairman, with that resolution having approved, move the adoption of resolution number two, set forth in our material, Board of Trustee Resolution governing the SUNY Erie operating budget for 202021 as revised and as presented before this meeting and at meeting, as set forth in our materials six.
Okay, Jeff, you made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Would Denise please call the roll?
Sure. Todd Hobler.
Approve.
Leonard Lenahan.
Here. Or, sorry, approve.
Carrie Phillips.
Approve.
Jeff Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz, approve. Amy Wilson, approve. Albert too.
Approve.
Motion's approved.
Mr. Chairman, with that motion having been approved, both motions wanted to resolutions, I will now move for the readoption of our Board of Trustee Resolution number three in our materials. Governing the SUNY tuition and fee schedule as set forth on page seven. And I will note that is not changed from our June 25th motion. We're simply readopting that motion to make a comprehensive. That's my resolution, my.
Okay, a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Wilson. Would Denise please call the roll?
Todd Hobler.
Approve.
Lynn Lenahan.
Approve.
Carrie Phillips.
Approve.
Jeff Stone.
Approve.
Susan Swartz, approve. Amy's approve. Albert too.
Approve.
Motion approved.
Okay, so we've now adopted and approved all three budget resolutions. Just to wrap up, is there any other business related to the budget amendments for today that we need to discuss before I make another motion? If not, first, again, thank you. We're going to be going into executive session shortly. But thank you to the whole team, obviously, Bill, for coming on campus and getting this done in nine days. And every, you know, Doug and, and everyone who's worked with him, Gail, Kelly, the whole senior staff that has really pulled together to get a yeoman's amount of work done in nine days. So the budget we're going to take over to the legislature is, you know, certainly more palatable. It's not, it's not an easy budget, but it's, it's certainly stronger than it was. And we're, we're thankful to everybody who played a role in making this happen. If, if there's not any further business, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to take up a personal matter regarding a county employee. Do I have a second? Jeff, did you second? It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Will, if Bob, would you all correct? We have to have a motion to go. We made a motion to leave executive session.
I'll make a motion that we leave executive session and return to public session.
Todd seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've left executive session. We're now back into, and Bill has joined us. We're now back into the full session of the, the meeting. And that being said, trustee Stone, we, we have a contract before us. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you. I will make a motion to state for the record that we have been in executive session to trust the contract of William D. Rutter to become the interim president of SUNY Erie Community College. We've completed our discussions. We've returned to public session. And I now move publicly that the contract for Mr. Rutter's employment as interim president, at least through December 31st, 2020, and for an additional period of time, duties to be specified through March 31st, 2021, approved in the form presented to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Trustee Hobler seconded. Okay, motion made by trustee Stone, second. Uh, trustee Hobler seconds it. Okay, motion made by trustee Stone, second by trustee Hobler to approve the contract as presented in executive session. Although, I would, I'm sorry, would Denise, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Approved by, or do I have to call them individually?
Yes.
Yeah, for the record.
Uh, Todd Hobler.
I approve.
Uh, Leonard Lenahan, approve. Okay. Carrie Phillips, approve. Jeffrey Stone.
Approve.
Denise Wilson, approved. Albert, too.
Approve.
Susan Swartz left executive session early.
Yeah, doctor's appointment. Yeah. Okay. So, yeah. Now the interim president's contract has been voted on and approved. Is there any other business before us? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close this special session an hour and twelve minutes after it began. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Trustee Hobler.